Last week, we did our Miracle Week for the Children's Miracle Network. And I know that we raised, we're not quite sure how much money we raised. I know it was over $2,000.
Wow.
And this afternoon, my secretary reported that she received from the penny drive that we had, she had to deliver 75 pounds of pennies to the bank to have them counted, which comes out to, if you're not aware, 75 pounds of pennies amounts to $475.95.
Wow.
So it was very successful, and we're very proud of it. So at this time, I'm going to ask that our student council representatives come forward and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Erin Scott, and I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Erin Buchman, and I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Molly Maloney, and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Katrina Cooper, and I'm in 6th grade.
I'm Madison Simpson-Brown, and I'm in 6th grade.
I'm Julia Howes, and I'm in 6th grade.
I'm Lucas Dobenberger, and I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Brody Potts, and I'm in 6th grade.
I'm Erin Toddie, and I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Cassie Williams, and I'm in 6th grade.
I'm Ethan Spire, and I'm in 7th grade.
I'm Jessie Doobie, and I'm the student council advisor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, great job.
Thank you.
On the pennies. Banks hate it when you bring in 75 pounds of pennies.
Sure, that's...
Take me guys like me, bitch.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November 10th, 2014, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November 10th, 2014, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Brings us to our red carpet recognition, and it's my pleasure to welcome Rick Colts to the podium.
Good evening. We're going to recognize our Teacher of the Year, selected last May at our Educator Banquet. We typically do this in November, but as you might imagine, our Teacher of the Year was busy, working with our students in the production over at Hempstead High School. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Lee Colker, who's going to say some words about Kate Reapy.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to introduce Kate Reapy, teacher at Hempstead High School. When I was preparing to give the, a little bit of an introduction last May, I went to staff, Kate is an English teacher, as well as theater at Hempstead, and I went to the colleagues, and I was thinking, okay, they're going to give me some great adverbs, some great adjectives, they're going to have this super introduction, it's going to be this well-worded, and I got a little disappointed when every person I went to said, I said, tell me something about Kate, tell me what her, if she was going to give a seminar on teaching, what would it be about? And every one of her colleagues said, how to connect to kids. And as, as I was saying, why does everybody keep saying connect to kids, I realized that I didn't need to look any further, and isn't that what we're looking for in every single teacher that we hire? The ability to connect to kids. So without further ado, I welcome Kate Reapy.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it. Thank you to the school board, and to the DEA, and everybody who's responsible for my very fancy frame. It's, teaching has always been what I've wanted to do, ever since I was a little kid, whether I wanted to be in art class, or an English class, or drama class, it was always I want to be a teacher. And it's been a big part of my family, and it's been really wonderful to have my career here in Dubuque. Not being from Dubuque, not knowing a lot about Dubuque until I came in and interviewed. It's been an incredibly supportive and welcoming place. And the members of my English department, the members of my faculty are all really, really supportive of one another. We help each other out, where you have to have, you know, someone fill in at the last minute, if you need help with a lesson plan, people are always there. And the students are wonderful to most days. They're wonderful. Also want to take the opportunity to thank you guys for our wonderful new facilities. Part of my job is to be the teacher, the theater teacher at Hempstead, and it's been, this last past production where, why I was absent in November, was really an amazing opportunity to see our kids learn the craft the way it actually would be done in a professional theater. And to have kids have the opportunities to figure out how to work a lighting board and a soundboard, and, and the rigging, and to see, every time they're in that auditorium, they are so proud and responsible, and the theater kids have an eagle eye out for every single gum wrapper that is out there in our space. But thank you so much for this award, the theater, and all of your support. Thank you.
It's called red carpet recognition for a reason.
My daughter loves starting her graduation.
Ah, she's so nice.
Yeah, I don't know where she gets those.
I don't know, probably.
This is where Superintendent Ryan Gans sings.
Oh, really?
Be careful.
You're going to love that, for sure.
All right, thank you, thank you, Kate. I know on behalf of the board, you know, we talk a lot about what we, what we have in terms of a vision for this district, and certainly, we know teachers are such a critical part of that. And when we think of compelling, compassionate, engaged teachers, obviously, you just gave us a very great example of that. And Mr. Colker, I think he hit it on the head. I mean, we don't ask anything much greater than just simply connecting with our kids. I think first and foremost, that's where we, that's where we start that journey. So thank you, thank you both. Board salutes, Mr. Strillo.
I was able to go to the Lego League event on Saturday, and it was a long day for the parents and the kids, but it was, it was a really neat day. And there was obviously a whole community of collaboration. I mentioned to Mr. Ryan Gans before the meeting that the volunteers from John Deere are incredible. I mean, it's just unbelievable what they did, but all the students and all the teachers and everybody that participated, it was, it was really a very cool event. And I would like to single out a couple of award winners. I think your students won the big award, so I guess they deserve a recognition. But two schools that kind of leaped out at me as I was walking around were the team from Audubon and the, and the team from Lincoln. Both of them won awards. Lincoln won something like the most enthusiastic, and, and it was very apparent, everywhere those Lincoln kids went, there was cheering and yelling. But I, I was keeping my eye on those two teams especially, and they both represented very, very well, and did a great job. So kudos to everybody.
Thank you. I just want to jump in there, I had an opportunity to attend as well. One of the things, you know, watching the robots in action was neat, it was really fun, is to go in a classroom with a couple of John Deere engineers and 10 5th graders from Hoover, and watch them get drilled by the engineers about how they problem solve, how they're creative, how was, you know, what was the biggest issue they had, how'd they overcome that? And listen to those, you know, 5th graders stand there and explain a pretty significant process of problem solving, and it was, it was a great opportunity for those.
Another neat thing to that end was, I was walking upstairs, I think it was an Audubon student and a John Deere engineer, but I, you know, witnessed the interaction in front of me. The Audubon student said to the guy, he's like, are you going to come and visit us anymore? And, and, you know, the guy went, said back to, to him, he said, you know, I don't think we're going to come there anymore, but we're going to try and arrange it for you guys to come out to our place and, and to see us. So I thought that was neat, too.
That's great. Thank you. Mr. Prohaska.
Yeah, I'd like to once again give a shout out to the, our musicians and their directors, conductors. We had 30 students in the Honor Band, the Honor Band Concert at Loris College. And also, we had 29 orchestra students recognized by the Northeast Iowa String Association to be in the honors orchestra. So once again, our musicians are doing very well. Like I said before, music is good for the soul, and it shows that our kids are very involved.
Good, thank you very much.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, if there's any persons in the, in the chambers here wishing to address the school board, please step forward at this time. Please identify yourself, your name and address.
Thank you, Board, Paul Kurt, 3485 Echol Hills, Bellevue. I want to thank you, the Board, for a casual meeting Saturday for Thanksgiving about capital projects. You went back 10 years, and you went ahead 10 years, roughly. And it was a very informal, casual meeting. I think you need to do that, and I think there's one scheduled for spring, looking forward to it, so thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, any other persons wishing to address the board at this time?
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Any board members wishing to remove any items for individual discussion or attention?
Yes. Mr. President, I'd like to remove for further discussion, item P.
The bus, the replacement bus.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But we will, we will vote on the rest of the agenda, and that will be then...
Correct.
It'll not be reintroduced again. Very good.
Any other items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
So item, so item P on the agenda deals with the, the replacement buses, and I think that for the purpose of the general public, I think we need to have a little explanation as to why we had only one bid, even though the item is, I assume, from a reputable company, et cetera. And Kevin, were you able to discuss this a little bit with us?
We actually received two bids. One received, was received after the date and time that we had put on the RFP, so that bid was unopened and returned to the vendor as per policy. What we do is, we put the bud, the bus bids out every year, and it's part of our replacement cycle. We have a process where we're going to try to keep buses 10 years old or newer. So as those ones get older than 10 years, we replace those with the upcoming year's model. We do, historically, we've received only usually one bid from one company, some of that has to do with the specifications in the bus bid. But we do compare those bids from year to year, and looking at the past year, for example, on one of the models we purchased, it was only a 1.3% increase. On another model, it was only a $150 increase over the past year. So we do look at those bids received, we also compare those to prices we receive from other districts, what they're getting from that same bus provider. So we do review those, even if we only receive one bid in a year.
Just curiously, how many RFPs do we send out? How many companies, just curiously?
We only send out one RFP, so it's up to the providers to send their responses to that. I believe there's probably three or four at most bus providers that deal with Iowa schools.
Thank you, Kevin, thank you. I guess I'll, any further discussion?
No, I'll make, I move that we accept the bid cost of $639,610 for the estimated cost of bid.
And I will second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the, the bid from Hogland Bus Company in the amount of $639,610. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
I would just point out that is for eight buses.
Yes, eight buses.
Traveling cross-country, I don't think. All right. Thank you very much.
And that price was what, like 2% more than last year, something?
Not less than 2%.
Great, thank you very much. That brings us to the Facility Support Services Committee report. Tara?
Yeah, we have Mr. Oswald here to explain the first motion we have about the bonds, so I'll make the motion, and then we'll have him come up.
Okay.
So I move that the Board of Education approve a resolution directing the sale of approximately $15,960,000 school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bond, Series 2015.
Kevin, before Tim starts... Do you want to give just a brief overview of, this basically is the sales of the bonds?
Right, the purpose of the sales of the bonds is to help continue paying for the projects that we started at Hempstead, finished Kennedy, and the beginning of the senior study. So we're spending more dollars that we're taking in this year, we're advancing the costs of the project, so we need to borrow some money to pay for those projects, which will then be paid off in the future with the sales tax proceeds that come in in future years.
Thank you.
Tim, if you want to take 15 seconds of filler time.
Can you sing?
I can do better than that. So we did have bids, they were due at noon today. We've been through this process before, the, we allow for an in-person bid, though I haven't seen an in-person delivery of a bid in 20 years. Electronic submitted bid through the system, or IDOL, so what this web-based bidding system, and then the faxes. There were no fax bids, there were three electronic bids, there were four firms that signed up initially, one, one chose not to bid, and that's fairly typical. So the winning bid is from a firm called Hutchinson-Shockey Early. Apologies, can everybody see that sort of?
They also have it on their screen.
I'm trying to do the tablet thing.
The bids, the inter, or, I'm sorry, let me back up. The bonds are due in the years 2028, 29, and 30, and that was by design, we're trying to manage against interest rate risk, and so what we're doing is issuing the bonds in the later years of the sales tax first, we'll come back, then in the next issue, and fill in some of the earlier years, and then that way, so if interest rates were to move against you, move upward, you would have less net effect of that, because there would be less time for those rates to have occurred. So these bonds are the longer end of the payment schedule. Today, and the average interest rate is a 377, and that's from Hutchinson-Shockey Early out of Chicago. The other two bids, BMO Capital Markets out of Chicago, and Robert Fair out of Milwaukee, and we go to 384 and then 387, so they're right on top of each other. The only commentary I have in, in interest rates is that the last comparable sale was in August, and it was about 2/10ths of a percent lower than this. Markets moved a little bit, there've been no other comparable issues since that time, and so the only versus when we met as a committee here a few months ago, the only edits I have are the rates are just a touch higher than I thought they'd be, about 10, about 1/10th of 1% higher than I thought they would be when we set out with this process. Okay, the uses of funds, sources of funds, bond proceeds, $15,960, and then the bidder had a slight original issue discount, $9,000. So that's like, original issue discount is like when you get a mortgage and you pay a point to buy the rate down a little bit, that's the same thing. We allow the bidders to have some parameters to bid, how they want to bid within those parameters, and so some will do a discount, a couple of the other bidders had premiums. Funds will go $14,75,000 to the projects, $10,005, almost to being $6,000 to the reserve account, and then bond-related expenses, $59,000, and the underwriters' costs of just over $200,000. Again, the underwriters' costs, I'm kind of numb to the underwriters' cost as a singular item. I care about the combination of cost and interest rates, so if one underwriter can make, wants to make a very large profit, but can sell the bonds at a very low interest rate, fine. If another one is willing to skinny their cost down to next to nothing, but the rates are a little higher, fine. What's the aggregate? What, how do I compare those two together? So I don't really worry much about that cost itself, other than as a component of the analysis. So this will complete, mostly complete the funding of the Hempstead improvements, and then we'll move on with the next funding that would come in the next few years for your other projects that are on your list.
Any questions for Tim? The list doesn't get any shorter. No questions?
All right, the bids were submitted in compliance with the terms, and our recommendation would be to award to Hutchinson.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a resolution directing the sale of approximately $15,960,000 school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bond, Series 2015. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry about that. Roll call votes.
Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Byteen?
Aye.
Mr. Downhill?
Aye.
Mr. Prohaska?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Strillo?
Is that it?
Pretty complicated.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just one quick commentary, since we just finished that, and obviously, this is part of what we are advocating for with the 1-cent sales tax and the continuation of that, we certainly have done great things, or we'll continue to do those things with the sale of these bonds, but looking forward, as was mentioned, our list continues with some elementary schools, and certainly, a senior high school, and the middle schools, so it's great when we have these dollars available to us, and we hope legislatively, we can make a case as to that should continue.
Great, thank you very much. Back to you.
Okay, we just have the rest of the committee report, I guess, just a few motions that we finished a few projects. I don't know if we want a bill to come up after those or not, but I'll make a few motions here. I move that the Board of Education approve the 2013-14 Internal Control Policies and Procedures Report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 2013-14 Internal Control Policies and Procedures Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the district's request to the Iowa School Budget Review Committee for allowable growth for increased enrollment, an LEP in the amount of $200,612.27.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the district's request to the Iowa School Budget Review Committee for allowable growth for increased enrollment, an LEP in the amount of $200,000.27. Everyone will recall, that's truing it up after our enrollment figures come in.
Absolutely. So it's just gaining those dollars this year for our students who need additional support for English language proficiency.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the professional services proposal with IIWPC for rehabilitation study of the senior high school tennis courts at a cost of $3,800.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the professional services proposal for IIWPC for rehabilitation study of the senior high school tennis courts at a cost of $30,800. $3,800. What did I say?
$30,000.
I meant $3,800. Oh, he expects bankers to keep those decimals in place.
He was, he's been counting pennies all day.
I was out, yeah. I counted 75 pounds of pennies. My apologies, all right, as I said, not what I meant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for a topographic survey of the senior high school tennis courts at a cost of $1,100.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for a topographic survey of the senior high school tennis courts at a cost of $1,100.
Bill, do you want to come up and explain those last two?
Yeah, I was just gonna, just real quick, I was going to make a pun and glad bills at the podium, this is just, you know, again, not to, not to try and slap ourselves on the back, but our staff is particular, you know, we're, we just spent 16, well, we didn't spend it, but we're bonding 16 million bucks, and as a taxpayer, I look at that and I'm thinking, wow, that's a lot of money flying around with these seven people in the front of the room, and Stan, eight people. But it's, it's an interesting story of how staff really does mind the store. Bill originally, I think you originally had a group that would have done that for about a thousand bucks more, or whatever the heck it was.
Three times.
But you actually, you caught that, and so you approached a couple other firms, and ultimately, wound up getting somebody to shave, we're not talking 16 million bucks, we're talking a thousand bucks, or 1,500 bucks, or whatever the heck, whatever it became, because you don't like, you know, you can't spend the same dollar twice. And I guess, I picked up on that, and I appreciate that. In a, in a $130, $40 million budget, where we do spend a lot of money, it's good to know that we're keeping an eye on all of the dollar amounts, even when they are reasonably inconsequential. But a thousand bucks here, a thousand bucks there, to a taxpayer is a lot of money. And so I really appreciate your diligence in making sure that even the small costs are kept in check.
Thank you. Just a quick explanation on this. This is to develop a plan, a corrective action plan for the senior tennis court. The tennis court's cracking, almost like you'll see in your driveway sometimes, which isn't very, very good for a tennis court, of course. So we're going to try to figure out what's going on underground, underground the cement, we're going to take some soil samples there, and try to figure out what we've got to do to correct it. Simple explanation, it appears like it's sliding down the hill. So we have to figure out how to stabilize that ground and get it to stay in place. We also have some drainage issues with the limestone retaining wall you see there. So $3,800 to IAW, and $1,100 to WHKS will be a site survey. And this is going to tie in real good with the transportation projects that we have coming there, too. So we're looking at it on a global... So we're looking at it on a global view over there, how we're gonna fix it. And this will give us a plan where we go next. All right. I think we voted on that, didn't we, now?
Nope, we have to vote.
Nope.
On the last one? Okay.
On this one.
Yep.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the professional services agreement with WHKS for a topographic survey of the senior high school tennis courts at a cost of one thousand one hundred dollars. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll make the motion. We have a few projects that got finished and we'll have Bill give us an update on how much under budget he came on all those. So, I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Ports and Construction, Inc. Whereas on April 8th, 2013, Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with Ports and Construction, Inc. of Dubuque, Iowa, contractor for the construction of certain public improvements generally described as the Kennedy Elementary School Edition remodel project. And whereas on February 13th, 2012, Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with IIWPC Architect for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas on November 25th, 2014, Architect filed a certificate with Dubuque Community School District certifying that the contractor had substantially completed the construction of said public improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract and plans and specifications. Whereas the architect has now submitted subsequent report, change order bonds and pay application to Dubuque Community School District recommending that the project be accepted by the district as fully complete, finally complete. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District. Section one, that said reports and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted. Section two, that said public improvement is hereby approved and accepted as have been fully completed in accordance with said plans, specifications and form of contract. Section three, that the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract with Ports and Construction, Inc. is hereby determined to be one hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred fifteen dollars and forty-four cents. Section four, that one hundred fifty-one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-four cents of the total contract cost yet paid shall be retained for a period of thirty days following the board's action to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to the requirements of Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the thirty day period claims are on file, as provided, the Dubuque Community School District shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file, the remaining balance of the unpaid fund, or if no claims are in file, the entire unpaid fund shall be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Ports and Construction, Inc. associated with the Kennedy Elementary School Edition remodel project as read. Any discussion?
And as we discussed in facilities, the budget, there was approximately seven million dollars when we started. We're gonna close out at about six point nine. So we're gonna be a solid hundred thousand dollars under budget on the project. We're very happy with the project and the job Ports and Stone for us. Good.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Go on to the next one. I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Geisler Brothers Company. Whereas on March 10th, 2014, Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with Geisler Brothers Company of Dubuque, Iowa, contractor for the construction of certain public improvements and generally described as the senior high school library roof and insulation replacement and HVAC upgrade project. And whereas on July 15th, 2013, Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with Anderson Design and Consulting, Inc., Architect for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas on November 19th, 2014, Architect filed a certificate with Dubuque Community School District certifying that the contractor had substantially completed the construction of said public improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract and plans and specifications. Whereas the contract, um, excuse me, whereas the architect has now submitted subsequent report, change order bonds and pay application to Dubuque Community School District recommending that the project be accepted by the district as finally complete. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District. Section one, that said reports and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted. Section two, that said public improvement is hereby approved and accepted as having been fully completed in accordance with the said plans, specifications and form of contract. Section three, that the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract with Geisler Brothers Company is hereby determined to be nineteen thousand twenty-one dollars and fifteen cents. Section four, that nineteen thousand twenty-one dollars and fifteen cents of the total contract cost yet paid shall be retained for a period of thirty days following this board's action to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to the requirements of Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the thirty day period claims are on file, as provided, the Dubuque Community School District shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file, the remaining balance of the unpaid fund, or if no claims are in file, the entire unpaid fund shall be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance, closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Geisler Brothers associated with the project known as senior high school library roof and insulation replacement and HVAC upgrade project. That's right in, that's the maximum, but we can go on in the name of a project.
I don't know. I think you should go longer.
It is. I think there's a.
Oh, there's so many characters.
Yeah, there's only so many.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Thank you for investing in this project because this is gonna provide a nice dry facility to senior and adequate exhaust upgrades to the kitchen area. The original estimated cost on that project, on this project, was four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And a total cost to the district, including architect and engineering fees, is three hundred ninety-two thousand nine twenty-three. So, good project. You've just invested a thirty to thirty-five year investment there, so it'll go a long time.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, one more. All right. I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Buy State's Masonry, Inc. Whereas on April 14th, 2014, Dubuque Community School District entered into a construction contract with Buy State's Masonry, Inc. of Rock Island, Illinois, contractor for the construction of certain public improvements generally described as the senior high school stone repointing project. And whereas on December 9th, 2013, Dubuque Community School District entered into a contract with IIWPC Architect for architectural engineering design services associated with the above project. And whereas on November 24th, 2014, Architect filed a certificate with Dubuque Community School District certifying that the contractor had substantially completed the construction of said public improvements in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract and plans and specifications. Whereas the architect has now submitted subsequent report, change order bonds and pay application to Dubuque Community School District recommending that the project be accepted by the district as finally complete. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District. Section one, that said reports and documents of the architect are hereby approved and adopted. Section two, that said public improvement is hereby approved and accepted as have been fully completed in accordance with said plans, specifications and form of contract. Section three, that the total contract cost of the improvement yet payable under said contract with Buy State's Masonry, Inc. is hereby determined to be five thousand five hundred sixty dollars and twenty-five cents. Section four, that five thousand five hundred sixty dollars and twenty-five cents of the total contract cost yet paid shall be retained for a period of thirty days following this board's action to finally accept this public improvement project pursuant to the requirements of Iowa Code 573.14. If at the end of the thirty day period claims are on file, as provided, the Dubuque Community School District shall continue to retain from the unpaid funds a sum equal to double the total amount of all claims on file, the remaining balance of the unpaid fund, or if no claims are on file, the entire unpaid fund shall be released and paid to the contractor in accordance with Iowa law.
Second.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution for final acceptance and closing final project costs for the public improvement contract with Buy State's Masonry, Inc. associated with our senior high school stone reporting, a repointing project as read.
Another very good project. The estimated probable cost of this project was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Total project cost, including soft architect engineer, total project, one twenty-two nine fifty-five. Actually came a couple thousand dollars under the hard cost of one twenty-five-two. So, Charlie was out there holding them to the specifications and looking for hundred dollar bills to pick up and did a very good job.
And then, the next motion is gonna sound.
Let me, let me.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, yep. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. So the next motion is gonna be maybe a little confusing and I'll have Bill explain because it sounds a little bit like what I just did. But, I move that the Board of Education approve IAWPC as the architect engineer for the senior high school stone repointing project, 2015-16, at the cost of nine thousand six hundred dollars.
Second.
And this is simply, Buildings and Grounds request you to prove that ninety-six hundred dollars so we can hire IAW again and do it all over again. We wanna start at the smokestack and move towards the parking lot this time. That area's really been susceptible to water infiltrating in the classrooms. If you look on the classroom walls, you'll see the paint bubbling. So this is gonna correct it. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we did it at Marshall and we were very successful there. That's what I'm asking to do here.
So this last project we just approved was describing which direction we went?
This one on our table right now will be for next fiscal year.
Okay.
That'll be paid out of the summer project, summer pebble project there. And the one we're just wrapping up is paid with this fiscal year's money.
Which parts of the building?
Oh, I'm sorry. From the elevator to the smokestack.
Okay.
That's what we just completed. So elevator towards the parking lot.
Yep.
Washed away a lot of years there. There's two restroom doors there, that was all refinished and spruced up. Now we're gonna go from the smokestack, again, out towards the parking lot, above the automotive area and fix that.
Okay.
There won't be any negative work because we're gonna start at the, we're gonna stop at the outside corner. As we know more and more about the renovation of senior, I'm confident there's no negative work here.
So all of this work that we're doing does not affect what we'll be coming forth with? I mean, this is stuff that has to be done now, so we're not spending the money only to have to say we're gonna do it again down the road or take it apart.
We won't undo any of this.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
This is, this is hundred year investments.
Right.
It is. You're right.
Right.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve IIWPC as the architect engineer for the senior high school stone repointing project, 2015-16, at a cost of nine thousand six hundred dollars. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Anything else?
Nope. I believe that. Thank you very much, Bill.
You know, also on that note, just, because I know I would be confused, as we look at the renovation, as we're coming forward and studying it, it's, it's common to think that, you know, we're not tearing down senior high school. So we've got to keep the structural on the outside, you know, intact. So I just think that we are discussing these things as we talk about the, in the renovation project.
Well, let's see. It brings us to Ed Programs Policy Strategy Committee Report, Mr. Prohaska.
Yes. At our Ed Programs Committee meeting, we had to discuss several things. I'll make a couple of motions here after I recap our committee minutes. We discussed the dropout prevention, allowable growth. We had a preview of our new district website. And it's really gonna be something, it'll be full operation by around the first of the year. We also had a review of our summer school data, which, where we had approximately two hundred twenty-five elementary students involved in the summer school reading program. Appeared to be very successful for the first time around. We also made minor, we discussed the physical education exemption request, which I'll make a motion to as well. And we, we made some review of some of the policies regarding academic freedom, fines and charges and the sale of bonds, as we discussed, and a little bit about the P cards. So that's pretty much what we did at our Ed Programs Committee meeting. We will have, next meeting, we defer to a couple of things for our next meeting, the Activities Report and the Special Education Report will be at our next Ed Programs Committee meeting. At this time, I'd like to make a motion, I move that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to submit to the Iowa Department of Education a request for modified allowable growth for dropout prevention for the 2015-2016 school year in the amount of four million five hundred eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars or the maximum amount allowed by the department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent submit to the Iowa Department of Education a request for modified allowable growth for dropout prevention for the 2015-16 school year in the amount of four million five hundred eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars or the maximum allowed by the department. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the physical education exemption request form as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the physical education exemption, exemption request form as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. New business.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number seven one four six seven four and number eight zero zero nine eight nine at this time. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student seven one four six seven four and eight zero zero nine eight nine at this time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Brings us to, any board member concerns?
I would just, several of us attended the annual legislative dinner a week or so ago with the city and county and schools and, and state government, all from this area. And it was, it's always a really nice event to chat with people and learn about everybody's objectives and also try to figure out where you have some consistency and some programs where you could potentially work together. And one of the things we heard, I think, started with Stan's speech, but then with a lot of folks, was that, you know, there is in our community, in our state, some challenges in the mental health area and everybody's looking for solutions right now. The county government is struggling, the city's struggling, the schools are struggling, the state's struggling. Following the dinner, I actually approached a couple of folks and, and got into a couple of pretty good conversations with council members, supervisors, representatives and even Senator Yocum, as well as some city officials, and talked about, can we get together, you know, as a community and, and try to find some, some real much needed solutions? And, and there seemed to be a lot of interest and a lot of willingness. I actually, I was telling Stan, I bumped into City Manager Mike Van Milligan at a party on Friday evening and Mike said, you know what, this is much overdue, we gotta get to work on this as, as a community. So I, I'm optimistic. I think the schools recently have done some good things. And I think this is an area where our community, certainly our schools, but our community has a lot of work to do and hopefully we can be a big part of the solution.
Any other board member?
I just, I'd just like to say that some of us were able to attend the Iowa School Board Association Convention down in Des Moines the week before Thanksgiving. And obviously, that was the first time Jim and I were able to attend, but I really appreciated the opportunity, the education sessions that you were allowed to choose what ones you wanted to go to. The most interesting one that I went to is when we got to hear from the Appropriations Chair for the Iowa House and the Senate about how they're going to approach the funding for schools for the upcoming session. And many times, they repeated themselves that lobbying is very important.
lobbying is very important. So, it's important for us and other people to really state how important it is for us to get that budget set early, and how important it is for that number not to be zero for the coming year, so.
I'd just like to add to that also, I enjoyed going very much. I wanna thank us collectively for rejoining the Iowa Association of School Boards, I think it makes us kind of feel collectively part of the state, especially the UEN and the strategies of the UEN that we're taking on the next year or so are very significant for the Dubuque schools. I happened to attend the school funding or school finance 101 basics, whatever, and it actually was presented by a former student at senior high school, and as, he's now is the superintendent at Battle Creek, Ida Grove Community School District, which happened to be the school district I first started teaching in. So, anyway, it was kind of a...
Small world experience.
Small world, yes, correct. Anyway, I appreciated going to the sessions, and I think it's great for our school board.
I will say that the Iowa Association of School Board, I was the delegate, and it was interesting to see that they're kind of coming around a little bit, I think they heard from a lot of the larger districts, they're finally giving a little bit of an ear, a little bit, not all the way, a little bit of an ear to the bigger districts on some of the initiatives that were put forward. It was a lot that the UEN was focusing on, so it was finally, it's good to see us back, I agree.